March 12, 2025. We start each meeting by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools strives to be a model district that creates a culture of inclusivity for our diverse students and staff who feel safe and supported, are empowered with the academic and socio-emotional skills to pursue their chosen path, and embrace their roles as positive contributors to local and global communities. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our order of business this evening includes our call to order, opening procedures, agenda review, and adoption. There'll be time for public participation. We have reports and presentations, athletics, winter update, Mr. Kevin Anderson, our athletics director, warrant approvals, superintendent's report, assistant superintendent's report, and our action items, discussion updates, and votes include Ashland High School competency determination, Ashland Middle School schedule change for the school year 2025-2026, the FY26 budget tri-board meeting follow-up. The consent agenda includes approval of gifts and donations, and minutes from February 26, 2025, reports of school committee members, and then when we will adjourn. So I will take attendance and ask if you all are okay with the order of business this evening. Marcy?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
And yes, for me, Mr. Terry will be joining us a few minutes late this evening, but we have a quorum and we can get started. So I am going to let you start, Mr. Anderson, and if someone can make sure I don't overlook the public comment period, I'm just going to move that further down.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kevin Anderson, athletic director here in Ashland, and I'm here to provide the school committee with some updates on winter sports here in Ashland. I'd like to introduce our TVL All-Stars. I am confident in saying we play in the toughest athletic league in the state, so these kids standing before you are some of the best and brightest this state has to offer. We're proud to have them representing Ashland. Some of the student athletes are here, some of them are not, but even if they're not here, I'm going to mention them because I think it's worthy. Our first student athlete is Kwan Amaral from wrestling. Kwan is a two-time TVL All-Star. He also got TVL All-Star in the fall for football. Our first student athlete who is here is Lauren Bosworth from girls hockey. Next student athlete is Bryn Carroll from cheer. Up next is Will Child, indoor track and field. Will recently committed to run at Westfield State, so congratulations to him. Our next student athlete is Molly Connors from swimming. Molly finished second in the state in the 100 breaststroke, huge accomplishment for her. Logan Costello, wrestling. Logan is a state champion at 106 pounds, and he just finished sixth in New England, so another huge accomplishment. Isabella Delgado from cheer. She's got the biggest cheering section, it seems, here. Luca Domestico, indoor track and field. Keishon Graham is not here, he's also indoor track and field. Adrian Guzman is not here, but he was the TVL Wrestling MVP, and he's a back-to-back state champion in wrestling as well. Boys hockey, Ali LaRue. Ali had an amazing season capped by an incredible performance in the playoffs. We went to Saugus and played Melrose, Ali scored both goals. We lost in overtime three to two. Great, great performance by him, he had a great season. Cole Lewis, indoor track and field, he's not here. Hunter Mags, indoor track and field. Natalia Melnick, indoor track and field. Kevin Ozelumba, wrestling, Kevin also is TVL All-Star in football as well. Anton Pukach is not here, he's a state runner-up in wrestling at 175, he was a state champion last year, so he made it, won the championship last year, finished second this year. Mandy Reed, girls swimming, I mean, what a story. Surgery, last year surgery, this year, and she came back to be a TVL All-Star. Awesome for Mandy. And Ava Vidia is not here as well, so those are all of our TVL All-Stars from the fall, from the winter. Overall, we've had 36 this year, so that's a huge number for us, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Just want to congratulate all the athletes. We hear about you, and sometimes we read about you, but it's not often that we get to see your faces directly, so thank you for making it out tonight. We appreciate your talent and your hard work and your dedication and for representing Ashland so well, and I hope you're also having fun while you're out there winning and doing so well, and that's, that's the name of the game. Thanks a lot, congratulations. Anybody else? All right. You, the other great news for you is you don't have to stay and watch what's going to be really boring after what just happened, and so you guys can all take off whenever you're ready, and we're just going to move along with our agenda. So have a great night for everyone who's taken off. Thanks for coming in, we appreciate that. Your one minute at the podium will be on TV, so if you want to watch it on WACA. Yeah. Yeah, thanks, parents. Can if you want to. All right, Paul's not here for warrant approvals, I don't know if he gave.
We want to go back to public.
Yes, I was going to do that after we went through the top, but is there anybody here who would like to give public comment? I know there are a couple people on Zoom, I don't see anybody else in the audience, so I'm going to move along. I don't see a hand or hear a voice. Okay. What about warrant approvals? Do we not do that because he's not here? He's the only one that's voted to do that, so we'll have to take that up when Mr. Kendall returns, and so we're on to your superintendent's report.
So I have, I have nothing more to report other than we continue to work on our budget and go through the process of identifying areas that need a little more pencil sharpening in terms of our conversations with our admin team the last two weeks since we had our last meeting. It's still perilous at best, looking at the landscape of not only the state but federal monies as well. So we're continuing to work on that. As you know, April 5th, we have another tri-board meeting with the select board and finance committee. I had sent an email out recently, yesterday, our April 1st meeting in April will be our public budget hearing. I did not want to do that until after our meeting with the other two boards. However, by charter, we are supposed to have our budget voted on 55 days prior to town meeting. We will miss that deadline as we did last year, but I think the town fully understands that and knows that because of the process, working through the three boards, that's going to be reasonable. That's all I have.
Mike?
Recently, our, some members of our middle school science staff attended a PD regarding the new science MCAS, and they learned a lot. There are going to be some significant changes that are certainly going to impact our students. We know that they will be taking science for two days, and one of the tests will be the new test, the other one will be the same test the students are used to, but those teachers are spending some significant time with their colleagues as well as they're going to spend some time at the, with the fifth grade to ensure that everybody is fully aware of the changes that we need to be ready for. Along with that, we've had some great conversation about science curriculum in general at our, at our science leadership team meetings, and we have come to the conclusion that it really is time for us to, to look really deeply at what we're teaching in elementary science. So we are going to be implementing some pilots next year. We haven't decided exactly which programs we're going to pilot. As you know, we moved to Amplify Science for the middle school this year, and that's been met with, actually, we moved to, I'm sorry, we moved to that last year. It's been, no, it's been met with mixed reviews, but when we saw what the new MCAS is going to look like, we realized that we really have made the right choice because the, what the students are doing, they are going to be ready for the MCAS because of the way the Amplify's curriculum is run. So we do think we need to make some changes at the elementary level in the area of science curriculum. At evaluation, we had a meeting this afternoon, another one of our edeval meetings to look at the rubric. I know I had mentioned this last time, there is no chance we are going to be ready by June. It is just, it is, we are, we are moving at a pace that is, is slow, but it's because the conversation has been so rich, and I explained that to the folks today, that I'm okay saying to you all that we're not going to accomplish that goal because of the richness of the conversation that we're having. It's just thoughtful discussion. Folks are really coming with great ideas, and we're challenging one another, and it's, it's important that we take our time and get this right. So I do want to let you know that that is going to be something that when June comes, we're going to say to you, we did not accomplish that goal. But we're prepared to work hard to make sure that we have a plan in place of how we will get things moving, but right now I know that it's just, it's not going to be done in time. I think I'll be able to better answer that question at my next report next month, because I think at that, for that, at that meeting, we'll have accomplished the task of looking at at least three standards. Right now, we're only at two, and we're not even done with the second one, but I think next month, the goal of finishing the third standard will allow me to figure out how close we're going to be. If you don't mind me punting that question. Finally, we have a professional learning day, early release day on Friday, so students are having an early release. Our staff members will be staying in the building for building-based PD. One of the events that will be taking place is we are going to be doing some of our Alice work. Teachers will be walking with administration to our rally points in lieu of, in light of any potential evacuation. We are going to take the time to make sure that teachers understand the safest passageway to our rally points that we have in town. Other than that, all's going great. Want to thank the AFI for their, holding their annual event, the Casino Night. I was not able to attend because Mr. Adams and I were away on some, our own professional learning, but I did hear it was a great event, so thank you to the AFI for all they do to support our schools.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, next up, Ms. Sinker, the competency determination.
What you have in front of you is our proposal for what should be added to our handbook in light of the changes with MCAS no longer being tested, and we are just looking to add that any students who satisfactorily complete coursework certified by Ashland Public Schools that we deem as in line with the standards that are covered in the 10th grade MCAS with English, math, and science would be counted towards meetings, students meeting competency determination for the class of 2025. In terms of students that that is impacting, we technically are looking at about 20 students in English and 20 in math, and I think it was seven or eight in science. I can't report that we're confident in the courses that we're teaching do meet the expectations, knowing that just about all of the students were in the partially meets category of, for MCAS, which means they would have been earning, earning a diploma, assuming that they were passing those courses this year, and they are on track to pass those courses that they are taking now, or they have already passed 10th grade English, whatever, they were taking 10th grade math. Our science students have all passed biology, the students that haven't necessarily met, you know, the MCAS. The, the small number of students that did not pass MCAS, it's two or three in math and English, are taking courses now that would meet the 10th grade requirements and are passing those classes.
Excellent. Is that just an FYI, or is that something we need to bone on?
Well, sorry.
Yep. No, go.
Yeah, so we do need to vote because it's a change in the student handbook in terms of the information that we need to put in there, and so the document that we shared as part of this meeting, basically, it just states that this will go into the student handbook for the graduation, it's to comply with the Mass General Law adjustments that were made in November. So it does take a vote by the board, so we can add this and amend the 24-25 Ashland High School student.
I just have a couple of questions for you, Kelly. First, in terms of which classes this applies, who obviously it applies, my understanding is that for this year and next year, students can either pass the, if they pass the MCAS, they can kind of check that competency determination box, but if not, they can meet whatever it is that we pass as the competency determination. I'm just, I'm a little bit confused in terms of the rollout and the timing. I know the state is in the process of, you know, kind of putting together regulations, and I just wasn't sure if we needed to specify which classes this applies.
No, I would, I would, I will answer that, and Kelly would as well. I, I think we need to have flexibility, the districts that have identified very specific classes, we have students who transfer in from other districts. We need discretion at Kelly's level in order to ensure that, again, are we looking at the frameworks in our, our classes that we teach? Do they meet the frameworks and the spirit of what is intended? So I would, again, until the state comes down with something a little bit more clearly identified, I believe this is the approach we need to take.
Okay, and that's fair, and I, I agree with that. I just wasn't sure if it was something we needed to spell out, so wanted to ask that question. Second question that I have, in terms of, you know, kind of how it's presented here, it, it seems like, I like the flexibility that's in this, because obviously, the students that, that we're looking at, you know, are, will likely need flexibility in terms of not just a specific class that they pass, right, but meeting, it may take, you know, I'm thinking particularly some of our special education students who may be in, have a modified curriculum, it may take a few years to pass the equivalent of that 10th grade. So I just want to make sure that in terms of, and it sounds like this meets it very well, how you envision that working out in terms of the, in particular, the special education students is really what I'm thinking of.
And we've had a lot of conversations about both the special education students and our English language learners.
Yes, thank you, yeah.
And making sure that, again, when we looked at our students who have had the requirement of MCAS in the past, who have maybe been in Resource English for, you know, four years of their high school career, but they have passed MCAS. You know, we can confidently say that those English classes are preparing students to have those skills. And our English, our ELL department has also done a lot of work in the last two years in making sure that their English classes are very much aligned with the standards that are being taught in our English department.
So by, I mean, some of them may finish it before their fourth year of high school, but by that fourth year that they will have met those.
So, you know, the couple that I referenced that, you know, hadn't necessarily passed MCAS yet, it's two or two, three students in, in English. You know, we are making sure they're in a course right now that is meeting that stand, those standards, and we are expecting that they will graduate because they are on track to pass that course.
Excellent. And then the last question that I'm hoping you can speak to, because I had a parent ask me about this, and there seemed to be some confusion, but competency determinations are, is, is a part of a bigger graduation requirement, so students still have to take four years of English, still have to take three years of history, three years of math.
None of that's changing.
Right, yeah, okay.
Right, yes, right. Competency determination is saying they've met, you know, the 10th grade standards in English, math, and science, whereas, you know, we have all the additional requirements.
Just wanted, just wanted you to be able to confirm that.
Yes, definitely.
In, in that policy, it's IKF.
Right.
That policy will be reviewed. I think Kelly and I have had these conversations, and I think we do need to bring it before the board to make some adjustments, not for this graduating class, but for moving forward, because we actually outlined very specifically what types of courses, whether it's American literature, for instance, or a specific sequence of world history. We just want to make sure that it fits really what the intent was, and this was done before our time.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that we have that, you know, really going to the, you know, the state core classes that are required to get into UMass.
Thank you.
That might, I just have a, I think it's a fresher question, so when you say in the end, local certification for class of 2026 to be determined, is that because of that?
It's partly, no, it's partly because the state has not yet to determine what is going to, they have, you know, they have actually, right now I'm looking at it, they've put out a suggested and recommended language that they think the CD should look like in the future. I, I don't want to go any further than 2025.
Okay.
So when we look at 2026 and beyond, those students who are graduating, we want to make sure the state has gotten their ducks in a row, if you will, before we make any decisions. The state certifies courses, so we will have to submit to the state. These are the courses we believe meet the spirit of the current law.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
In the future, we don't know what that's going to look like. So in 2027, for instance, part of what they're looking to do is say that every student has to have US history as part of the CD.
Just on that point, the language at the end, and this to me is just a matter of clarity, because if we're voting on this and it goes into the handbook as presented, might raise questions about the difference between local certification for the class of 26 to be determined, year 20, year of graduation 27 and beyond, sort of says to be determined as well. Is there a reason we need to distinguish those, or could it just, for clarity, only year of graduation 26 and beyond, and then have the language says to be determined depending on the guidance from?
Yeah, I, I was rereading this again this afternoon, and I actually think we could actually end the entire recommendation for the 2025 handbook where it says, before you get into transition considerations, the decision of the building principal shall be final, because it only focuses on 24-25. Then we revisit the 25-26 handbook after we get feedback from the state. But to your point, to your question mark, no, we could combine them.
I think when we originally drafted it, we were getting information from the state to look at 25 and 26, and now they've changed.
So we had written this before.
That might something be coming out about 26.
Yeah.
Folks are ready for a motion, I'll make a motion to amend the competency determination language in the high school handbook to be as presented from the text of competency determination through the end of that heading, so such that the language in the draft that we're all looking at, it says transition considerations is not included. And that's through the end of the document.
So to eliminate this part.
The transition considerations below, yep.
So at the end where Jim was referring to, with the sense the decision of building principal shall be final, period. Right. That's my motion.
That's the motion, so we need a second, please.
I'll second that.
And then all in favor, Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Everything, everything in yellow, Kelly.
Thank you.
In that document, okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, Ashland Middle School schedule change for school year 2025-2026. Chappelle, hello.
Good evening, how are you?
Good thanks, how are you doing?
I'm great.
Final stretch of your first year, kind of?
Yeah, still ways to go, but we're, we're here, so.
So I just, again, I want to go back and just give the contextual overview for folks, and if, for those who have been following along, you know, Erin has given a number of presentations to the board as the reason why we're looking to modify the Ashland Middle School schedule. There's no more information that she can provide to us that you have not received already in, in public setting. It's a matter of because there are curriculum changes, meaning adding another English class, the science, engineering, and, and removing the discovery, if you will, those are curriculum changes which do fall under your purview.
Yep.
And I can unequivocally state that, you know, Erin and I, even as of this morning, had a conversation, we don't necessarily have those courses defined particularly all the way through. Right now, the, the English teachers are, and science and math are working through those to ensure that the frameworks are being met. It's just, this will allow Erin to start the actual backend of scheduling folks now, and looking, and, and having an idea of what class sizes look like, where the schedule needs to shift. This is, when you schedule a building, it's really time-consuming and challenging. So this is the reason why Erin is here tonight, to get that approval, to move forward with the curriculum changes. Sorry, Erin, go ahead.
No, that's, that's just a summary of what I was going to say, so the, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
So yeah, the, the change is dividing the sixth grade ELA into a sixth grade reading comprehension class and a sixth grade grammar and writing class, which the ELA department is really being really thoughtful on the design of, and even down to the text, are they using the same thing, are they going to be entirely different? And I don't have those answers yet, but they're really working on scope and sequence. It's their focus on Friday, so after the PD, and once, as the scope and sequence is being developed for these, I'm happy to come back and give kind of a summary of where, where they're landing on it, but they're being really thoughtful, not just of sixth grade, about that impact that it will then have on seventh and then eighth grade ELA over the next three years. So they're, they're, they're working on that, so that's the change for sixth, seventh grade. The two teachers who will be teaching that have already spent some in-service time looking at the science, technology, engineering standards and developing, you know, with a, with an end project goal in mind, backwards design of how they can do those lessons, and they're going to plan to do that again on Friday, and then probably take a couple days, you know, as they are able, and then definitely some summer curriculum work, they're both very excited to come in, I mean, I don't know that they're very excited to come in in the summer, but they're excited to have a plan and for this opportunity to develop the course. And then the eighth grade Spanish is the Spanish one curriculum, which the middle school's Spanish teachers are meeting with the high school world language teachers on Friday for PD for some vertical alignment on that, to make sure that we're really trying to have that as aligned as possible. So those are the changes. So those are the changes curriculum-based that, that I would look for approval on in order to be able to do that schedule development that we're hoping to get rolling in the next couple of weeks.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
I guess I'd just like to make a statement, I mean, I've said this, I think, in our prior discussions, but sort of bringing this to add, I feel like we've been talking about the schedule a long time. I realize tonight we're talking about the curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
But the truth of the matter is, the schedule is getting in the way of the curriculum. And this has been a project that Jim, you were working on for a decade? Something like that, five years now.
It's been a while.
But every time it's come to us, and the discussion has been a lot about the schedule. And what I feel really good about is you're not just solving your schedule problem, which is sort of a new problem as a building administrator, but you've found an opportunity to make multiple improvements to, in my view, what we're doing for our kids in the middle school. Like, this feels like this is really moving us forward in a lot of different areas, and taking what, to some degree, was a conversation about foreign language and the wheel and different things, and sort of leaving that in the past are really moving us forward. So I just, congratulations to you, I'm not going to give you many congratulations. But I know there's been a lot of people involved and the staff, right?
Yes, the staff has been, yes.
And collectively, you've come up with something that, at least as a non-educator who's just looking at this from a common sense sort of parent community perspective, I think is going to make a world of difference for our kids.
I hope so.
I'm thrilled with what you've got.
Thank you.
Very well said, Mark, I concur. You know, and just to see things addressed that we've been talking about when we knew we needed to do more focusing on writing, and here you are, setting aside the time for that. So I think there are a lot of things that are finally coming together that we've been talking about for a long time, so thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
For writing and engineering, are you talking with, for example, the Ms. Egan or other English teachers to make sure that, like, if students in high school are having issues with particular fields in writing, are they getting?
That's a great question. Ms. Egan actually came to the last middle school ELA curriculum meeting and gave them an overview of not only, for recommendations for eighth grade going into ninth grade about level and placement and the skills that they should be seeing, but they had a bigger discussion, I think, about the curriculum and these changes we're going to make and potentially the impact that it can have. And the writing discussion that's happened with some of our ELA teachers is, are they going to use that class to do some writing for their other content areas? So some science writing, some social studies writing, so some interdisciplinary work, so it's not just focused on a novel or poetry or things like that. So I think the long-term goal and the scope is to be able to pull in different subjects and look at the writing for those subject as well, so, great question.
Well, mentioning, I mean, I think the flexibility that this new schedule actually has in it, which I think it, it's incredible that you can, can level that, the way that you're going to be able to level will look differently, right? And, you know, kind of looking through the lens that I often look through is meeting the needs of our, you know, unique learners. And the flexibility within this schedule to really be able to do that in a much more inclusive way, I think is really impressive. But just to think, what you just touched on in terms of the writing piece, in writing across the curriculum, the writing class in sixth grade, I think, is going to be so pivotal in terms of that process, and what does it look like, and how do we plan, there's so much that's going to be put in there. And, you know, to kind of piggyback on what Mark said, the, the way that this is not only addressing kind of those long-term issues that have been there with the schedule, but really pinpointing what are the needs of our students right now. And I think this, in many ways, really hits the nail on the head. So I'm grateful for the work that you've all put into it, I think it's going to yield some nice changes, so, well done.
Thank you.
I'll be your perfect Tuskegee's, because I have a sixth grader and a rising sixth grader.
Perfect.
So back-to-back, real, real-life data.
One's going to be able to write really well.
Yeah.
Kelly's problem.
Awesome.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, we're going to need an motion, because it's a curriculum change.
I'll move to approve the curriculum changes at the Ashlyn Middle School as presented.
Second.
All in favor, Marcy?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Aye. Done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
Thank you.
You all good?
Oh, shucks.
I think he did.
Sure. And I have not heard about the tri-board meeting yet, I fortunately could not make it, so I'm waiting myself to get the report.
Sure, so, so the conversation that when Mark and I were discussing what, in the meeting, in the tri-board meeting, was we need to debrief as a, as a group to say, okay, where are we today? What do we need to be focused on as we get ready, and what information do you need from Michael and/or me as we get ready for the April 5th meeting? And, you know, I haven't heard from anyone in terms of what other data you're looking for or information you're looking for from general government and from me. So I think that's something that is needed over the next week, because it was two weeks from Saturday, it'll be the April 5th meeting, and in order to pull stuff together, our team is constantly evaluating where we are, and that's.
Was there a takeaway from that meeting, other than that people need to follow up with you, but?
Yeah, no, for me, that was a takeaway. The bottom line is this, we were, and it varies daily, right? It's probably about a 2.6, 2.7 million dollar deficit right now between the general government and the schools. So we're about a 1.1, 1.2, somewhere around there deficit. That's, and by deficit, I mean, over and above the 3.75%.
Right.
That was initially budgeted by general government, right? So that's where we are, and that's where the general government is. And it's, it's trying to then pull together the three boards and say, what is our best approach? Is our best approach in FY25, 26 to consider utilizing our one-time funds that we have available at the general government and at the school side, which we do anyway, right? We're significantly dipping into our, our school choice and other, you know, building rental fees, et cetera. Is that, is that the right approach for this community in FY25, 26? With the understanding that in future years, those funds are being depleted. There is grave concern, I have, about 1.2 million dollars is tied up in federal entitlement grants that do not show up on our overall budget. We have three teachers that are Title I teachers, how does that impact our budget, right? So that's not even a discussion of the 1.1 deficit. If, if, if that occurs, how are we going to meet the needs, again, going back to you, Tina, right? Saying our most vulnerable student population, how are we going to meet their needs? And do we have to add those individuals back into our operating budget, thus increasing our deficit?
Right.
Right? So that's really, Lori, it was a really, you know, I thought, you know, contextually, you know, I certainly would like a little more detail from, you know, the positions that the general government is looking at adding, that's just me. We're, I think, for the most part, being cost-neutral in terms of, we've got some significant reductions in folks that we're accounting for, that we, whether, there are some paraprofessionals that we haven't hired this year, that we said, okay, can we do without them next year? They were in the budget, we've removed them. As you know, Esmer's position is not being rehired. We've got teachers in retirement that are occurring, where we're not filling positions. You know, what I didn't mention, you know, with Erin, is when we're looking at the middle school schedule, and folks are going to say, oh geez, are you going to add staff? It's actually, we're reducing staff, but no staff is losing a job, right? So we have, and I want to be clear about that, we have folks that are certified in different areas, so we have a middle school teacher going up to the high school, right? Because they're certified, we have retirements in the high school, that they're allowing for that to occur. So it's, it's important, really, to figure out how we're utilizing things such as the special education stabilization fund, 600,000 there. We talked a little bit about, you know, of the 1.1, I mean, we've got about a 900, and it varies day-to-day, I got another email today, it varies day-to-day what that number looks like. And it could be higher, it could be lower. And, and I think to be as transparent as possible with our community, sending messaging out and saying, we're working towards these things, is critical. But is it a, a message that comes from the three boards, me and Michael? I think preparing folks to, to not feel like there's doom and gloom, but to say, hey, this is real right now. These things are happening. This is how we tend to approach our budget process. And we're doing the best we can with what we have been given. There's a lot of talk about the reduction in new growth in town, and that, that was a really strategic and approach that the town has taken over the past couple of years. But it comes at a cost, meaning that those revenue dollars are not there for us to utilize. They anticipate that going back up in a few years, two to three years. But until that does, there's going to be a little bit of that pain in between, so. I don't know if I've captured the meeting, Lori, enough for you, but I think.
No, and I, you know, I honestly didn't want you to have to go through, you were all there, so repeat yourselves.
But, no, but that's sort of.
Hear about it again, but I'm just wondering, like, what, what's the goal for the next meeting?
I, I would say for the next meeting, one, if we could get the materials Michael presented. I looked online, have not, I mean, it could just be user error, but I could not find the slide deck he presented, so I'd like that just to look at. And then, two, I think I had specifically asked him for a list of fixed costs, if he could detail out what the fixed costs are, meaning like the bond payments we have to pay, or the utility bills, and what are the rate of increases we've seen over the last three years? I know they really spiked, you know, 30% for most people in the last couple of months. So the more we can demonstrate what is fixed in that increase we're seeing, I think will be helpful context in terms of not just additive things to the budget, but things that we may not necessarily be able to control. Because they're, you know, we're going to pay the mortgage, we're going to pay our utility bill, you know, those type of things. But I, I think having the deck to refresh Jim will help me just with my specific question.
Okay, I'll make sure, I'll email him.
I was going to say the other thing, and I brought this up at the, at the end of the meeting as well, too, it would be helpful for me to understand, what are those one-time funds that, that as a municipality, like we have as a town to pull from? I think you outlined all the ones that we, as a school district, have, but I, I don't have a good understanding of what those, what that looks like from the town side. So that would be really helpful to kind of lay them out, much in the way that you did in terms of, these are all the different accounts that we have, here's the amount in them, and here's what we can use them for, so that we can understand where, what can we pull from? If we, if that's the, the direction we choose to go, to pull from those one-time funds, so that I feel like it'll, it'll help us make a more informed decision.
And on the town side, right, it would be stabilization fund, right, and then?
Stabilization, rainy day, which is.
Right.
The other one he mentioned in the discussion was overlay surplus.
Right.
And so I was going to say, pretty much the same thing Tina did. He made, I asked the question, sort of, are we talking about stabilization? And he said he would pull first from overlay surplus. Asked what that is, and I forgot what he told us. He gave, he gave another, he gave something that I understood at the time.
Right.
I just have lost it. But to your point, I want to show it there, if that's like millions and millions of dollars, I don't think it is. But if, if it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a ready source.
Right. And what can we pull from, what can we do with that much?
What's the risk of doing that? That was, that was the biggest thing for me, was sort of, because I think my, the ultimate question, I think Lori and previous stepped out just to touch base with Kelly real quick, something else. Excited to hear if Jim said this, but I think the overall question in the room is, how do we want to balance the FY26 budget? Do we want to focus on cutting the amounts that were short? Now the deficit figures that Jim's talked about, the ones that Michael's talked about. Do we want to look at using one-time funds to fill that gap? And, you know, to me, I will say now, I said it then, you know, to me, the data that Michael presented about new growth coming up in a couple of years suggests that use of one-time funds on a limited basis is a feasible alternative. I don't know which.
Which funds?
Which funds, I mean, holding stabilization makes sense to support our budget. Overlay surplus, if that's a big number, that makes sense.
Right.
But if we're doing that, and we're still not even tapping into stabilization, that tells me as a community, we're in pretty solid financial shape. Because our stabilization account generally is targeted at 10% of budget. And I think we've been at that for quite some time, that was sort of driven by the policy that.
Right.
That all three boards adopted collectively 10 years ago. So I'm part of the reason I'm saying that now, which might be a little bit ahead of what I was asking about. I'm out of town at a conference on the 5th, so I won't be there. So I want to put those thoughts out there so that, to the extent it's relevant, to get consensus or feel where it is, I wanted to sort of share my thoughts. But I think, specific Jim, to your question about, so what other information? It's really, for me, the point that Tina raised just now, looking for that data is most important to be able to evaluate it. I think I asked him a little bit for some sense of projections, right? Because when he talked about the new growth figures and kind of came up with a curve that was sort of here going down and then coming back up, when the big project over 1040 Main Street comes online and some others, there's a new project permitted for Crossmont High School that I think we've seen, maybe don't like, but, you know, it is. You know, there's a possibility for this being a relatively short-term dip in new growth, but it doesn't speak at all to project as to expenses, sort of like Marcy was talking about. So I think it would be helpful not just to see the historical data, but also, do we have reason to believe that whatever that trajectory is, is the best we can estimate going forward?
Yeah, I mean, especially too with, like, the tariffs coming. There, I mean, I've seen all kinds of ranges, like eight to 15% spikes of, you know, utilities, janitorial services, construction services, all the categories, so, purchase services. So I just think that's another prudent thing in a projection we have to think about. So, I don't, you know, I don't want to go all accounting on you guys, but there's a lot of variables.
Why, you're here.
Right, right, right. A lot of variables in the mix.
You can talk accounting with Jim.
It's fabulous.
Yeah, I like, I look at these things as like 30,000, but that's the way I can understand them.
Yeah.
Is right now, there's a lot of uncertainty about that.
Correct.
And for me personally, when I see that, I'm like, I tend to be a little more conservative. And I want to make sure, like, if I've got cash in the bank right now, that gives me a better position to prepare for whatever might come. And obviously, it's a different scale for any of us personally versus a town, it's the same concept.
Correct.
And so as much as I'm in favor of looking at these one-time funds, I want to make sure we're doing it in a responsible way. And I think you've outlined a responsible approach with respect to our revolving accounts and the like, but I don't have as much of a sense of how that fits into the overall town picture right now.
Is the expectation that on, on the 5th, we'll have a better understanding of, you know, how the town intends to approach that? Because obviously, that impacts what we need to do.
I don't know, I'm not sure, I think we're going to walk out of there hopefully with the intention is that we've got a direction.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I'm sure they're having internal conversations about their budget continuously, like we are.
Right.
So I'm not.
I mean, the town budget, I just pulled up last year, is they're pretty good at laying out the different types of one-time funds and the other sources. I think what would be helpful is similar to how you do for us, and take us through, you know, here's where we started, here's what we want to use. Like, that would be helpful to understand in that level of detail.
Okay.
At that meeting.
Yep.
If they're open to it.
All right, God bless you.
Yeah, I guess my impression is that the goal is to have a consensus of.
Approach.
Yeah, of approach, right? I mean.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Jim, you sent, you had just a minor question on the budget process. You mentioned this earlier in your report, and I think you sent us an email. What's the date on which you did have our budget hearing?
That first April, fifth, I mean.
12, I think.
Yeah, whatever that first meeting is, in April.
You did the public notice.
It's going, it goes out a week, yeah, it'll be April, April 9th, correct, which is after the 5th. Pretty good calendar right there, huh? Yeah, April 9th. Okay, and, and for context, last year, we approved our budget on April 2nd. So it's a week after, still outside the 50th. So it's a week after. Still outside the fifty-five day time window, but it's very similar in terms of the, the timing.
Anything else before we move on to the next topic, which is the consent agenda? God bless you. Motion to accept the consent agenda?
Moved.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We're, we're there.
Updates.
Updates. Abashak, we'll start with you, hello.
Yes, so we are going to begin M C A S in our schools. So that's rapidly approaching. Again, we have teacher development this Friday. So I'm sure the administration will do a great job with that. And that's pretty much all I have. We have other events, like N H S is putting on a talent show, things like that. But it's kind of getting into the, the trenches of it now for, for different testing and things like that.
Thank you.
I don't have an update.
Excuse me, I attended the Ash PAC meeting last week. And, you know, they, one of the questions that they had, where they were looking for some information on a budget update, and I told them it's coming, constantly being worked on. You know, they did, we had a discussion around the language that we used to discuss the budget. It's always something, you know, that we talk about and, you know, I, I shared how universally we discuss the budget and how we continually do that, that it's not specialized cost versus generalized cost. It's the costs to meet the needs of all of our students. And I think it's, it's been that way for a while. And I think that they, they recognize that, but want to ensure that that conversation continues. So it, it was, we talked about it, but not from a, a lens of anybody being disappointed, just kind of the, you know, kind of continued assurance that that's, that's how things were discussed and the lens with which we view these things through. I assured them it was.
Great. Can I ask you just, I want to understand that comment. Was there concern that special education programs weren't under, not for just simply that, like, you know, sometimes people, you see this in town meetings, it hasn't come from us, but where people are like almost blaming. Is that, I just want to.
That's, that, I think that's more of the concern in terms of how we as a committee discuss the budget so that it's not presented as a, as a, you know, that's what's causing the challenge, right?
Right.
Any specific pocket of money, right, that needs to be spent, that, that it's, it's kind of the fault thereof. Because it's not, we need to meet the needs of all of our students. So it's, it was more about the language with which it's discussed, not necessarily a concern that needs weren't being met. Yeah, no. Yeah.
I miss say counsel takes at a hearing much longer than I expected. But I will catch up with Kelly, that's what I was chatting with her out, and I'll just make sure and connect with her next week so that I can provide an update based on ongoing discussion, particularly related to the way that we're reading. An update for you on that, otherwise I don't have.
I have nothing to add tonight either, so, other than asking for a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody. We'll see you next time.